Good evening. Welcome to the Frankfurt Area Chamber of Commerce forums this evening for the May 22 primary. The forum we're televising right now and talking to is the City Commission for the Frankfurt City Commission primary. We'll go from 11 candidates down to eight candidates as a result of the May 22 primary, and then they'll run for the final four spots in the November fall election. I'm Dave Weller, your moderator. I want to welcome all of you for being here. My job is just trying to keep this somewhat organized and keep from getting completely out of control, which is likely with me in charge. I want to thank all the people that helped us get to this point, all the people that worked so hard, our Frankfurt Area Chamber of Commerce, the Frankfurt State Journal, and the folks that provided the forum and the questions, Kathy Lindsay and the Frankfurt Plant Board, all of their staff for televising this this evening, and all of the candidates for being here, as well as all the audience. Thanks you for being a part of this. Just a reminder, the way this will work, they'll each get a one-minute opening statement. Then questions will go from the panelists to the candidates running for office. We'll rotate around those. Every question that's asked will have an opportunity to be answered by every candidate. So there's nothing that targets any particular candidates. In other words, everybody answers every question. So the challenge, folks, is with 11 candidates is to sound, be truthful and honest and forthright, but at the same time, be unique, so we remember your answer, okay? 10 ditto's is not good TV, so if you'll work with me on that, we'll have something that the foes will want to watch. Our panel tonight is Kathy Lindsay from Frankfurt Plant Board. She's the Public Information Coordinator, and she'll be asking the questions that come from the community. The community was asked to participate with questions, and they have, and she'll select from those questions to ask you. Next to her is Steve Stewart, our other panelist. He's the publisher of the State Journal, and we're so thankful to have both of them as part of our panel this evening. After they do their opening statements, they'll have 45 seconds to answer each question. Then they'll have a closing statement. They have one wild card that they can use at any point in time to get an additional 30 seconds to answer or to rebut another answer if they like. If they don't use that wild card by the end of the night, we'll add that on to their closing statement. They'll have a minute 30 rather than a minute to do a closing statement. Are there any questions? Good. Okay. Let's go ahead and get started. What we're going to do is the candidates drew lots, just like Derby post positions, and the person who drew position number one is candidate Lynn Bowers. Lynn, would you begin with your opening statement? You have one minute.
Sure. I'm Lynn Bowers, the daughter of Dr. Herman Bowers, retired minister, and Shirley Bowers, retired schoolteacher in the city school system here. I am serving my seventh term as City Commissioner. Prior to and during my terms as City Commissioner, I have taught the university level, 13 years teaching psychology, public administration, and social work. The other branch of my career has been in disability evaluation, providing services of courts, Anderson, Franklin, and Woodford, University of Kentucky Psychiatry, and the state of Kentucky, doing disability evaluations for social security. I have served the community outside of City Commission service with Kiwanis Club of East Frankfurt, Habitat for Humanity of Franklin County, Frankfurt Commandery of Knights Templar, and Trinity Baptist Church as pianist. Thank you.
Buddy Bennett, you're up.
My name is Martin Scott, Buddy Bennett. A lot of people don't know that, but Martin is from Martin Feimster, the Scott is from Scott Boyd, and the Buddy is from Buddy Rush, and that was the one that stuck. I'm the last of eight children that were born and raised in a house on South Frankfurt. Beginning in 1966, my oldest brother, Tom, started Frankfurt High, and in 1984, I graduated Frankfurt High School. And there were at least three of us, if not one, enrolled there the entire time. After high school, I went on to school at Eastern Kentucky University, where I graduated with a degree in business. I spent the first three or four years as an executive with the Boy Scouts out of Lexington, and I've been with Lee Rick and Block for 24 years.
Thank you. Scott Tippett.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Or should I say good night? First, I want to thank the Chamber, Hotel, and FPB for holding this event. It's a good thing for the community to learn more about us. I am Scott Tippett. I am presently in my first term on the commission. I am a retired teacher. Spent 27 years teaching and coaching in both school districts. I was a head basketball coach for many years. My wife is a retired teacher as well. She spent 30 years in the Frankfurt Independent School District. My son Andrew lives and works here in Franklin County as well. I have spent the vast majority of my 60 years of my life here in this wonderful community.
Our next opening statement, and I've asked you to say it three times, so Delvin, I want you to correct me if I don't get this right again. I'm trying my best. Delvin, as a faithful...
Close enough. I'm a schoolteacher by trade. I am thankful for God allowing me this opportunity to be here. I'm thankful to my lovely wife, Carla, for standing by me and supporting me in this time. I'm thankful to my son, Tim, who continues to work hard, and he has a don't quit attitude. And I also want to thank my grand master, John W. Mason II, who taught me martial arts, the best Christian that I ever knew. And I feel that he's in heaven looking down on me and looking at this moment in history. I grew up in poverty. I come from humble beginnings, and because of that, I will always sympathize with those who are less fortunate. I believe we have a society that have a rigged playing field to benefit just a few, while the masses have to struggle. I want to be the candidate to help make Frankfurt better.
Delvin, thank you. Okay. We have one candidate who couldn't be with us tonight. He sent a short statement, which is going to count as his opening statement, closing statement, and his answers to questions. So, Robert E. Roach. "I apologize for not being able to attend tonight's Frankfurt Primary Candidate Forum. I scheduled a mission trip to Cuba several months ago and cannot reschedule, as I am going with representatives of churches in Tennessee and Illinois. I want everyone here tonight and the broader viewing audience to know that Frankfurt is facing the same challenges as communities our size throughout the country. These challenges include unfavorable demographics, a lack of imagination on the part of leadership and leadership that votes based on sentiment instead of reason. During my three terms, I have tried to support policies that improve our demographics and lead with imagination and reason. Examples are decreasing taxes and fees charged by the city, promoting attrition in economy and city government, supporting matchy grants for the old core of the city, doing everything I can to improve the quality of our schools, serving as a part of the team that secured a Tiger grant, and being a person not afraid to take a stand regardless of the cost. I ask for your vote as we seek to build upon our wonderful heritage and transform Frankfurt into the crown jewel of the Commonwealth." Thanks for your patience and allow me to read that. We'll continue with our opening statements. We're up to the second level. Brent Schwager, you're up.
Building strong community through leadership and hard work has been my mantra for the last 23 years that I've lived in Frankfurt. In 2007, I helped found the organization Walk Bike Frankfurt, and since then, I've helped craft the master plan, which has led to dozens of projects of sidewalks, trails, and bike lanes across our city. I served on the Women's Shelter Board during a time where we were able to establish the first building and hire our first executive director. I've also led the Transportation Employees Association, where we fought for better pay and to protect the pensions of state workers. And I'm a civil engineer. I've worked, I've graduated from Virginia Tech. I've worked for the Federal Highway Administration, and now work for the Transportation Cabinet. And my experience there has, in planning and designing highway projects, gives me the skills to understand how to deliver small and big projects all over Kentucky.
Thanks, Brent. David Fields.
My name is David Fields. I graduated from Kentucky State University in 2016 with my degree in elementary education. I currently teach with Frankfurt Independent School Systems and was recently endorsed, along with Eric, by the Frankfurt Fire Department's local 1017 Union. I'm not a politician. Party lines should have nothing to do with our race or our decisions. My answers may not always come out clean. The words won't be flowery, they won't be the largest, but they will always come out with the best intentions and with common sense, and always have the best interest of Frankfurt in mind and not my own personal interest.
Thank you. Eric, is it Eric Wisman?
Wisman.
Okay. You're up, sir.
All right. I am Eric Wisman, Eric E. Wisman. I was born and raised in Franklin County, and as a 35-year-old, I am the token millennial of the group and your youngest candidate for City Commission. Again, I was raised in the community of Bald Knob here and have been very involved in a number of things. I graduated from the University of Kentucky, and throughout my career as an adult, I've really been called to public service, and I serve a number of roles in the community. I am the Executive Director of the Kentucky Trust for Historic Preservation, which was founded here by Bob Pauls Grove. I'm with the Franklin County Trust for Historic Preservation. I revived and saved the old Oddfellows Lodge from closing last year. A member of Envision Franklin County, Lebanon Cemetery, the Old Kentucky Home Foundation, and also the Architecture Review Board here in Frankfurt. So I've been involved in a number of things, and I'm really looking forward to being able to lend some of my skill and new vision for our community of Frankfurt and seeing how we can progress to be the future city that we can be.
Patricia Waldridge.
I'm Patricia Waldridge. I was adopted by an all-Caucasian family out of Lawrenceburg, Kentucky. I've been a resident here for 21 years. I'm a mother of Jason and Josiah, Ahoda Bachelors, and a master's in public administration, concentrating in HR, nonprofit organization, and grant writing. I have worked in many areas of higher ed, Kentucky State University and UK, in grant areas such as EPSCOR and NSF, while creating collaborations and partnerships with Frankfurt and surrounding communities. I have worked under two governors in the Secretary's Office of EPPC and reconstructed the HR process for COT. At Kentucky State, I have always served in a manner to work closely with the community, chamber, and DFI, and I always am consistent and timely in my communication and dedicated to the consistent representative of KSU, always available to assist Frankfurt. It's time to be intentional about Frankfurt's future, so be intentional with your vote and vote Patricia for a seat for City Commission.
Thank you. Shannon Griffith.
Hi. My name is Shannon Griffith. I've resided in Frankfurt all of my life. Most people know me by different names, but I made history when I signed my name up to the ballot. It was because of the Frankfurt residents that asked me to sign my name up because of the true leadership for the last eight months that I've been willing to stand on the street and demonstrate action. Not only that, but I can also deliver the truth, so that's why they call me Awesome Shannon, Homie the Clown. It doesn't matter, because when I'm called to action, I will get the job done.
Thank you. John Sauer.
Good evening. I happen to be the oldest candidate for the City Commission and experienced. My name is John Sauer, and my father's name was Frank Sauer. He was known as a philanthropist to many charities in town, a businessman, a former mayor. My mother, however, many Lynn Evans-Sauer, was also very active in the DAR, the Garden Club, a 50-year member of the First Baptist Church and the Women's Club. I come from a family of service. My roots go deep. And I went on to graduate from Good Shepherd, went to summer school at KSU, and graduated from Western Kentucky University with a degree in business with an area of concentration both in marketing and in management. I was elected mayor in 19, City Commissioner first time in 1977, then mayor in 1979. Most recently was a City Commissioner in 2015. I also did my retirement for a lot of charities in town in the last two years.
Thank you, John. Okay. Buddy, can we still call you Buddy for the purposes of this forum?
That's all anybody knows me as.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I wasn't sure I picked up all the other names.
That's what I'm on the ballot as.
Congratulations. Yeah, it's good. Okay, thank you. Steve, would you ask your first question of Buddy, please?
As y'all know, every voter is going to get to pick up to four of you, so it becomes a reasonable question whether you consider yourself to be politically or philosophically aligned with anyone else on the ballot or with Mayor Bill May, as voters look to choose a slate of candidates. Do you think you are politically or philosophically aligned with anyone else on the ballot or with the mayor?
I think I am politically aligned with a few people on the City Commission on certain issues, and if you want to know what they are...
I should have asked. Yes, I do want you all to say who you consider yourself to be aligned with, if your answer to the question is yes. My bad.
I think I'm aligned on the current City Commission, obviously aligned with Tommy Ains, and Robert Roach, and Scott Tippett. That's who I think I'm more aligned with. Those people, as far as what I have seen their work on the commission, I think that's who I'm aligned with.
Okay. Scott, same question.
I'm aligned with the people of Frankfurt in this community. My only agenda, my only ideology is this community. So if the answer to a particular question comes from the left, and it's the best for this community, that's the answer that I'll adopt. If the answer to this question comes from the right, that's the answer I'll adopt. Whatever is best for the widest swath of this community is what I'm for. It is nonpartisan, so in a sense, the question really shouldn't be asked in that way. Pardon me, Steve. So I would just say that I am looking for the best solution for the community from wherever it originates.
Delvin.
Because I believe that we need to put people over party, sure, there are certain aspects of all these fine people up here that I will agree with from time to time, but in general, I'm going to agree with what the constituents would like to do. I teach social studies, and one thing that I do teach is that we have a representative government. And what a representative government is, is where the people choose a representative who will enact their desires. I'm here for the people, and I'm not here for other candidates. I'm not here for other people who are sitting on City Commission. I'm here for you, Frankfurt.
Brent, you're up.
Well, I'll try to answer the question a little more directly. I know, I've known Eric Wisman for many years. He and I are co-members in the group Envision Franklin County, and I say that I feel aligned with him because we've addressed a lot of issues involving growth and development, and we fought for many of the same thing in those terms.
And David.
I'll kind of echo what a few others have said. I don't align myself with one specific person. I take the best of all of us, but my number-one alignment will be with the people of Frankfurt and making sure that their voices are heard. I mean, if you're asking if I have anything in common with others, myself, Eric, and Patricia are all millennials. I think I'm 36. Eric's 35, and Patricia's 33. So, yeah, that's the best answer that I can give you on that one.
Okay, Eric, I think it's your turn.
You know, I'm proud to say that I've had many of the panelists here as an influence. Bill May particularly, I graduated with his older son, and he was probably a direct influence on the reason that I decided to run for this office, from seeing that experience, and Houston Wells, as well, as my middle school principal. So definitely those have influence on me. But beyond that, I've been able to work with a number of people, Brent and David and Scott directly, but, you know, I don't take influence directly from any of these other people. I want to do what's right for our community and beyond aligning myself with anyone. I don't believe that's an appropriate question, really, for this discussion.
Thank you. Patricia.
Well, politically, I don't think that that's really appropriate, this time being that we're running nonpartisan. However, I think an alignment, I also align with the city of Frankfurt and their residents. However, I do look at things that are going on in the city and who would I sit next to. However, I think I've invited myself to several meetings to include myself on what their views are at the forums and things, and I believe that working with them and the mayor, it's time for leadership, and I support the mayor as running for City Commission. And he just needs some people that's willing to work with him and help guide him as well. And I think working with a great group of people, I'm going for a seat and not against other people.
Okay. Shannon.
I'm for the people, and I'm also for my neighbors. So for anyone that's on the panel that actually lives downtown, in the heart of downtown Frankfurt, you're my neighbor, and I align with the people of Frankfurt, and I'm also willing to do that without a paycheck. So whether I'm in a seat or without a seat, I'm still for the people.
And John.
I guess I'm a conservative, senior businessman, retired now, who cares a lot about the people. I had the strength and courage to oppose the present City Commission when I thought it was right, and that was over the convention center. I wanted to keep it. They didn't. And so you can expect me to have a conservative fiscal policy. When I was mayor, we tried to get a dollar and a nickel out of every dollar spent at City Hall.
And Lynn.
I'm not aligned with any one or more candidates up here, and I will tell you what I tell people at the door. I was told by one citizen, a young man, "I have to choose between you and this other candidate," so I'm told. And I explained to that person, "No, you don't. You can vote for one person, or two people, or three people, or four people. Don't waste a vote, and don't throw one away. It's dangerous to align with individuals when you serve in an office like City Commission, because if you do it well, and you're objective, and you're serious about the issues before you, you soon learn that your alignments change and vary from issue to issue." So I'm not running to be friends or be in a club. I'm running to do a job.
Thank you. Kathy, would you ask your first question? Scott, please. No?
Someone waving a wild card. I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it. David, you want to comment? Can we get 30 seconds?
Absolutely. I'm kind of going to piggyback off what Shannon said, where she said that she was for her neighbors of South Frankfurt. And what I want people to realize, and I hope that they do, is that while downtown Frankfurt and South Frankfurt is extremely important, you know, Frankfurt as a city as a whole is eight miles wide, and we cannot forget to focus on them as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any else? Okay, Kathy, we're back to you. To Scott, please.
All right. This is, I'm reading questions that have been submitted by the public, so we'll just jump right in here. We have someone from the public who has commented on the battle of personalities on the City Commission. So the question is, "What experiences or characteristics do you possess that would foster a good working relationship with the other commissioners?"
Well, quite frankly, I think I've already exhibited that. But what I would say to you, anyone who has completed a 27-year teaching career has good people skills and good networking skills and good communication skills. Like I said, I'm willing to listen to any quarter for a good idea, and quite frankly, I'm concerned about this idea of alignment. You know, I'm searching for the best answer, and then if we can build consensus from that best answer, then we're better off. So, yes, people skills are important. I possess those, and I have good communication skills.
Delvin, same question.
What I can tell you is that through being a teacher of at-risk kids, I deal with children who come from very rough backgrounds. I deal with children who are argumentative, and a lot of times, their parents are a lot worse than they are. And I'm able to bring those parents together to improve their parenting skills, to help their own children. If I can help parents to realize that they are making mistakes in their own parenting styles and to help them to improve, then I'm sure that I could do that with people who are opposed to certain issues or for certain issues, so that we can always agree to disagree.
Mr. Schwager.
I have a history of working on lots of different types of projects through both my work and through my volunteer activities. And to achieve any one of them, it takes working together as a group. It never is one person that can succeed alone. So being able to talk to people, work through difficult issues, but the conversation is so important. Now, I think when we have tough issues where there is some contention or expected contention, I think using people like yourself, Dave, as a moderator, to help facilitate the discussion could really go a long way to getting to the root and finding a solution.
And Mr. Fields.
Sure. I don't have a personal agenda that I need to fulfill when I get onto the City Commission. I'm not going to tell you that I am going to be the voice for you and then align myself with someone because it's the easy route. If I tell you something, I'm going to do it. I have a backbone, and I'll stand up for what's right, even if it's not popular, and I can work with anyone. I haven't met anyone yet that I haven't been able to work with.
Mr. Wisman.
Yeah, you know, my daily work is working with cities and counties all over the Commonwealth to find solutions essentially for old buildings, but also for community, to help build community, to help find solutions that best serve the constituents around the area. And to do that takes a lot of effort. It takes a lot of pride swallowing, if you will, and then finding solutions that bring connection between a group of people together. So all of my work in nonprofits is really centered in that role, is to find a commonality that produces the best outcome for everyone. And I think that is the best skill that I can bring to the City Council or City Commission in this role, so.
Thank you. Ms. Waldridge.
I feel I'm open to, when I listen, I listen to hear. I listen to hear. I listen to move forward. I also feel that when I'm bringing problems, whether it's working with three other individuals on the commission, when I bring problems, I want to bring solutions as well. So not just to throw a problem out there and leave it on three others to make a decision, but also to bring a solution. I've attended many fundraisers just to get to know individuals here that are competing for a seat as well, and that's part of getting to know them and how I can work with them as well, and getting to know the people around them, of who they are and what characteristics they have. So I'm very open in getting to know all.
Thank you. Ms. Griffith.
I'm thankful that I do have many personalities, and that comes because you need the ability to be able to listen to the people. The main goal is to get what the people want done, and that, you will have to have people skills to be able to reach what it is actually that the people are actually wanting. From dealing with sick death and dying for 15 years straight out of high school, it gave me the new respect of life, and I feel that your perception, your personality, is the reflection of your life.
Mr. Sauer.
I have eight years' experience in dealing with two mayors and five city commissioners. I've disagreed sometimes, just like I said a little while ago, about disagreeing with the present City Commission regarding the Civic Center. I also have praised the present City Commission regarding their grantsmanship expansion. So I think I can have a cordial relationship with any kind of politician, liberal or conservative. And I think it's our job as members of the commission to explain the why of our vote. That's what's missing sometime to the people out there in the community. What is the why you're going to vote that way? And I'll tell you.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers.
Can I ask you to state or ask the question? I lost the first part of the question. I kind of lost, and...
We had someone comment on the battle of personalities that has been seen in the City Commission as of late.
Okay, that's what I missed. Okay, let me just say, it's not a battle of personalities that may seem that way, but if you see a commission where everybody's just having no crosswords and nobody's very, you know, energized about anything, you've got a bad commission. I've worked with at least five, maybe six, city managers, and through seven terms, a host of commissioners, and I find that when those commissioners leave office, we're friends out there, and I'm friends with some of the commissioners and some of the candidates here I'm good friends with, but it's not about having everything float along real easily and positively. It's about doing a job, and the issues are what we battle about. We don't battle with each other. We battle about the issues, and that's a healthy commission. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett.
Two things. First of all, try getting eight kids and all of their families in one room for a Thanksgiving dinner or a Christmas dinner and trying to keep peace, and luckily, we can do that, and we've learned how to do that. And I say that kind of flippantly, but it's the truth. The second is I'm a problem solver, and that's what I do every day. I may sell masonry supplies commercially and residentially, but every day, there's problems that arise, whether... that arise, whether it's in production, or whether it's in distribution. And I've got to figure a way to get what my customer needs, and I'm going to treat my constituents as customers.
Thank you. 30 seconds, Ms. Bowers?
I forgot to answer the second part of that question. The second part of that question was, "What characteristics do I have?" Well, I'll just tell you that just during my tenure at K-State, after serving on several committees in the IRB, the Institutional Review Board, I was elected by those committees to chair those committees. So I have a very strong work ethic. I seem to motivate people to want to work together. Now, I'm not the chair of this board, so I don't fill the same role, but I have characteristics that make a good worker on any board in which I serve.
Mr. Tippett, you want to invoke your wild card?
Yes, I would like to gently take issue with the assertion that former Commissioner Mayor Sauer has made at least twice now. This commission did not choose to tear down the civic center. We had no choice. The Bevan administration did that because they knew and did not tell the public that they had to have it as a staging area to tear the tower down. It is not this community's fault that we're being abused by the Bevan administration.
Thank you. Another wild card, Ms. Waldrich?
I would like to piggyback on what Lynn was saying, and I just want to say that right now, I have to disagree. We do not have a healthy commission right now. It's not for the people right now. And I feel that there is a way to conduct business in every meeting, no matter if you're upset, or you're trying to get your meeting across. Personal matters need to stay at the door, and at the meeting, you are to respect the seat of mayor, no matter if you care for the person or not, and you are to respect everyone that sits at the other table on the other commissions as well. So there is a way to conduct business completely, and we do not have a healthy commission.
Anyone else? Thank you. If not, Steve, can you direct your next question to Delvin, please?
Sure. We can debate the reasons, and everybody can pick their side, but I think it's clear that city commission and plant board relations are strained. Would you attempt to play the role of peacemaker if elected? And if so, what specifically would you do?
Again, I'm here for the people. I'm all for transparency. When we elect officials, again, those are the people that we're putting our hopes into. And when we have a non-transparent process, that's quite dishonest to the people who put those folks there. The other thing that I would like to say is that Frankfurt Plant Board does have its issues. Frankfurt Plant Board overcharges for their internet. There are a lot of people who can't afford when they just arbitrarily raise rates, and those rate increases aren't explained. If you are a person who has two to three part-time jobs, it's really hard to afford those bills. On the city commission, I would definitely make sure that we will pay peacemaker to help the community.
Thank you, Delvin. Brett, you're up.
I've been walking through a lot of neighborhoods and talking to a lot of people, trying to find out what's important to them. And I would say that the Frankfurt Plant Board issues in general, it ranks about number two or number three, most common thing that's brought up to me. I think one of the things that's been hurting right now, and this is not just a plant board issue, but we see this at local government as well, is that when we do projects, we need to learn how to involve people from the very beginning, so that they have a vested interest, and they understand, and they can participate, and so that you gain the buy-in from the very beginning. So if we can do more of that, both with the plant board and local projects, I think we'll be better off.
Thank you. David, you're up.
Sure. Well, you know, of course, I want things to be more peaceful between city commission, its members, and the plant board. And I will do my best to make sure that that is done so on my part, because I am not going to let a personal agenda, or politics, control my decisions, or my actions on the city commission. It's just not what we're there for. It is a nonpartisan race. It's just, for lack of a better word, it's just not cool. It looks bad. Transparency seems to be an issue, even though the decisions that are being made could be made with the best of intentions, you have to be transparent in your decisions, and the process.
Okay, Eric, you're up.
Yeah, you know, even before the current issues with the plant board have came to light, there's been a disconnect for many years, obviously. I've single-handedly worked with some projects in the community that were killed by the plant board's inability to work with developers to do projects, and they would not budge. You know, the Frankfurt Plant Board has somewhat unreliable service, we all know, and high-speed internet is critical for Frankfurt's growth in the future. We have to find a way to make that happen. We need to have open working sessions with the city commission, county, plant board, all together, to find the best solutions for our community. And, you know, it was established in 1946. I would like to establish a committee of citizens and elected leaders to look at the plant board, and see if the model really best serves us still today. There's outdated language, a lot of things in the ordinance and the statute that could be better served.
Thank you. Patricia, you're up.
I would say that I would want to make sure that the board and the organization are held accountable for doing what's best for Frankfurt. I think there are serious issues that create huge divisions in our community, and especially dealing with independent boards. We have to know that where we are as far as commission, and that we're not here to micromanage other people that know their job. I think with the new contract coming in, we must work together to ensure that Frankfurt is getting the best deal for our ratepayers.
Shannon, your turn.
As a mother of three, it does affect me as well in my home. I was one of the candidates, or should I say, the bill supplier, that was made to change her bill to the first of the month. And as anyone understood, changing your bill from the 15th to the first really impacted the families, and are the reason, they said, "Get used to it, because you only have a month." So I think the Frankfurt Plant Board should be able to focus on growing the community, not growing their monopoly.
John?
Steve, could you repeat the question again, just so I can adequately answer?
John, I was so busy thinking about my next question.
I'll give you one minute, Steve.
I've got to refer back to my notes here. Yeah. I think we can all agree that city commission, plant board relations are strained, regardless of which side of the issue you're on, and what you believe to be the reasons for the strain. But my question is, would you attempt to be a peacemaker in that relation? And if so, exactly what would you do?
Yeah. Well, to give you the history on it, of course, the latest uproar has been when two members of the Pleasant Plant Board voted against KYMEA. And to me, that was a bad thing to do, and that's why we eventually thoroughly vetted the next candidate, which was John Cubine. It was stupid, because it was going to save us $8 million in one estimate, and $6 in the other. I would help it by thoroughly vetting the candidates. Thoroughly vetting the candidates, not only for the FPB, but also the Frankfurt Plant Board. I mean, I'm sorry, the Frankfurt City Commission, excuse me.
Lynn?
Well, I was one of those commissioners that had a role in that already. In retrospect, which sometimes is better than prospect, we can see where we probably made some mistakes at different junctures. And if I could go back and have a part in doing things differently, I would ask the Board of Commissioners to sit down with the plant board members in a joint meeting, and talk about those allegations, those complaints, those things that we needed to change, and see if we could come to some agreement. I did recommend training for all of our boards, and I would just do things differently at several different junctures, in retrospect. Thank you.
Thank you. Buddy?
There has to be healing. You know, the Frankfurt Plant Board has a budget of over $100 million. The city's budget is $30 million, roughly. So when you've got a municipal utility which is that large, and the city is actually in charge of putting people on that board who are going to be buying power, not just for the city of Frankfurt, but for other municipalities, those people must be absolutely vetted. And when I say vetted, they must provide a resume, and must be gone over thoroughly to make sure that the people who are buying our power understand the grid, and that their decisions affect everyone.
Thank you, Buddy. Scott, you have the final word on this one.
Well, what I would say is, this controversy is not about personalities, it's about the ratepayers. My complete and total objection to the route that the Frankfurt Plant Board was taking was it directed us toward massive litigation. If you think we have problems, our folks have problems paying their utility bills now, you wait till the market becomes uncertain, and see those bills in January double and triple. So what I would say is, it really is about the ratepayers, and how we protect them.
Thank you. We're good? Next question? Kathy, could you direct your next question to Brett? Schwager up on the second row?
Sure. This is another, excuse me, another submitted question. Kentucky has ranked dead last for 11 years in a row for animal welfare laws. Knowing this, would you support a revision to the county ordinance to include an anti-tethering law along with heat and cold restrictions?
Okay, clarification. You're directing, it's a county change?
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, the city... Okay, this, I'm sorry, also, a city ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Do you need me to repeat it?
No, I think I can answer that.
Okay.
I just got a dog in December, and I love dogs, I love animals. There is absolutely no reason to mistreat animals, especially pets. And I think that these issues where people leave them outside, neglect them, don't feed them, it needs to be addressed. I'm not sure how much of a problem it is within the city. I do know, I've actually heard some people talk to me as I'm walking about that issue, but that's something I would support.
David, pets?
Well, for most people that know me, they know that I am a huge, huge pet lover. And the fact that anyone would tether an animal is absolutely ridiculous. And to do it in conditions to where that dog is, even in, a dog, whatever, is in slight discomfort, is absolutely horrible. I would absolutely be in support of any ordinance that would help our animals.
Eric, your thoughts?
Yes. Animals and children cannot protect themselves. We should absolutely be able to provide the oversight that is necessary to make sure that those creatures, God's creatures, are safe. I'm a huge pet advocate as well, and our markets always have pets down there, helping to advocate to the local humane society. So anything that would help protect those animals, absolutely, I'd be in favor.
Patricia, your thoughts?
I would like to agree. Anything for animals, I'm also in favor of. I think that animals have now, and pets have become family members. And so if you don't see you treating your child like that, or anyone else in your family, you shouldn't wish that on another animal as well. So I definitely agree on taking care of our pets.
Shannon, your turn.
I agree as well, and I can't believe that we're facing that issue still today, that we can't get a safer law for the animals that cannot, you know, defend themselves. We do see that people are more devoted and dedicated to their animals than sometimes just the human relationship. So I would say we'd go back to being in society, is what happened in society to where we ever thought that it was okay, and to still allow it to be okay.
John Sauer?
Obviously, I would think that type of law should have some flexibility for the officer involved. You know, if it's extreme cold, if it's extreme heat, you know, that's going to up the scale, and certainly you're going to cite the person sooner. Likewise, the tethering, if it's something that has just happened, you may give them a warning, and tell them to let the dog, or cat, whatever, loose. But I think you have to have some flexibility in the ordinance.
Lynn Bowers?
My answer is just a simple yes, I would. Support both.
Mr. Bennett?
The last four animals that my house has owned, two have been from the Humane Society, and the other two were rescues. That being said, it's very obvious that I would support and vote for an ordinance that limited or outlawed tethering of a dog.
Mr. Tippett?
Anybody who's been in South Frankfurt for any amount of time has seen me walk in my beloved Shelby, who's named after Shelby Street, through the streets of South Frankfurt. So, yeah, tethering is ridiculous. But that being said, it is my responsibility, because Shelby's essentially my property. So I've got to make sure that Shelby's not dangerous, or he's not aggressive, okay? So Shelby's behavior is my responsibility. I got to make sure that he does not do anything that endangers the lives of old people, or children, or anyone, or any human being. So, that being said, yes, let's look at the ordinance.
And Delvin?
I have a black lab named Noche, and I have a rescue pit bull named Dika. And I am definitely in favor of animal welfare. I recently attended the celebrity waiter's dinner to help support the Humane Society, and I support those efforts. I would have to respectfully disagree with Mr. Sowers, because I think that in order for these ordinance to be effective, they have to have teeth. So if you just spank somebody on the wrist, are they really going to stop? So yes, I do agree that we need to have an ordinance, but it has to have enough teeth so it can bite back.
Thank you. Steve, you have a question, and you can direct to David Fields up on the second level, please.
Y'all can certainly take your full-time limits to answer this, but I think it's conducive to a lightning round that would allow us to get in a couple more questions. Should one-way streets downtown be two-way?
Keep going. Eric?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? Shannon?
It's kind of the controversy, because if you're actually downtown, then you kind of understand why it's one-way. But if you're a tourist, you would want to see it to be two-way. But if you're a pedestrian, you would kind of want it to be your way. So either way, just make downtown safer.
Whichever way you're going, you want it to be your way, right? I'm sorry, John, go ahead. He says what I'm thinking.
Yes, some. I think you need to look at your traffic managers in order to make the determination on each individual street. We're going through that process with Barry Alberts, and his planning of how the downtown ought to look. So, you know, some yes, some no.
Lynn, your turn.
That issue is, I say there are always new issues, always old issues, and reoccurring issues, and I'm not sure whether that's a reoccurring or an old, but it's been an issue on every commission that I've served. And I don't have a strong feeling either way, and I know that there are groups that feel strongly either way. I've always been, and always will be, willing to consider the information brought to me, and try to make the best decision.
Buddy?
Yes, provided that the delivery trucks have a place to pull over somewhere in a central location. I know that's a problem with, I've spoken with many people downtown, and said, "What do you think about two-way?" They say, "Well, it'd be good for business." But my delivery truck comes here, and they stop right here in the middle of my business, and they've got to unload everything into that business. If you have a two-way street, how is that going to work? So those are all things that would be considered. As long as there is ample parking for UPS, FedEx, and all type of deliveries downtown, I don't see why it shouldn't happen.
Good question. Scott?
I'd like to see some economic impact information, because I'm for improving all economic activity. So if two-way streets give us a more vibrant economic scene, and folks are coming and buying goods and services in the downtown, then let's certainly look at it.
Delvin, I think it's your turn.
Of course, we need to look at having two-way streets. Our current structures are designed to bring people in, to take people out, but to not keep people in. And we need to do this in order to develop economic activity. The future starts today. In order for us to start thinking about Frankfurt in terms of the 21st century, in terms of actually being a capital that all Kentucky can be proud of, we have to look at the way that our infrastructures are designed. Of course, we would have to consult with people who are experts in architecture, and city planning, and those types of things, but we definitely need to do that in order to increase our economic activity.
Thank you, Delvin. Brett? What do you think? Two-way streets?
I think some of the veteran, some of the long-term commissioners that have served know that I've been a champion for looking at two-way streets, and converting two-way streets for a long time. I was a strong advocate to try to make Main Street a two-way street, and unfortunately, we lost that battle. we lost that battle. Hopefully, we can bring that back. It works. I mean, in most cases, it works. It has to be looked at on a block-by-block basis, but 90% of our streets will work, they will function acceptably, and it will be good for circulation, for tourism. We can see it working right now, as they've converted some of the one-way streets for the construction project.
Thank you. Kathy, I think it's your turn. Can you direct a question to Eric Wissman up on the second level, please?
Sure. How do you envision the city of Frankfurt working with the Frankfurt Independent Schools to generate much-needed revenue? What areas, what opportunities do you see for collaboration between the city of Frankfurt and the local school system?
Yeah. I'm actually proud to be part of a new collaboration on the board of Capital Living that's now developed as a new offset of Kentucky State University that will be directly working with public schools in Franklin County and Frankfurt Independent Schools to bring more opportunity between all the groups. But, you know, the sort of the gorilla in the room is that the state owns so much property. Some estimates, 10% of the property in the city districts. We have to have a discussion with the state about unloading some of that property for private development that can go into private hands and generate the income that the city schools need, as well as we have to incentivize all of our local infrastructure downtown, all of our buildings. We've got to be able to renovate so that the property values are increased, and those in turn feed into the school district. We can do it, we can use a lot of incentives that are available that we've yet to do.
Thanks, Eric. Catricia?
Could you repeat the question?
Question, please.
Sure.
How do you envision the city of Frankfurt working with the Frankfurt Independent Schools to generate much-needed revenue? What opportunities do you see for collaboration between the city of Frankfurt and the local school system?
Well, right now, with the collaborations, as Wissman had brought up, that's a great start. Also, I think the college that we have here, the university that we have, them teaming up as well, and helping our students get the education that they need as far as classes, I think that that's huge. I also think that we need to redo the downtown area. Like Kentucky State owns a building downtown, and it's been sitting empty for a while, and if our city schools can use it, why not? It's just sitting there, and half of them don't even know that they own the building when you talk to them. So for me, it's all about communication and where we can help who.
Shannon?
Frankfurt Independent School District is known for the heart of downtown Frankfurt. It's been in the same location where it currently resides, and it's on the front, basically, doorstep of the city. Currently, we're not doing anything today to make the area safer or better, even though that we do generate the revenue. So the revenue is there, sometimes we just don't implement what is actually needed today versus two years down the road, when we're facing that Frankfurt Independent School Systems may be one of those affected with the cutting if they don't join with someone else. My thing is, is it shouldn't be so much about the money, it should be about the children that are actually coming to school each and every day.
John, what's in your mind?
Can you repeat the question one last time?
Sure. Everybody listening? How do you envision the city of Frankfurt working with the Frankfurt Independent Schools to generate much-needed revenue? What opportunities do you see for collaboration between the city of Frankfurt and the local school system?
I would advocate for more state property turned over to the local community, and I'll do that as a city commissioner. We have 7.6 that is supposed to be given to us. It ought to all be put on the tax rolls. That's how you're going to generate money for not only the school system, the library, city and county as well. The state has a lot of underutilized property still in downtown, and that would be my target.
Lynn Bowers?
I'd have to give that a lot of thought. I will echo her second commissioner, or Mr. Sauer, he was a commissioner with me, what he said. But also, the city actually gave $200,000 of taxpayer money to the Frankfurt Independent School Systems by funneling it through KCDC. I did vote no. I'm proud of my vote. I still believe that was an illegal act, even though after three attorneys told us it was, we got an opinion that it was not. I will do anything to support that school system that I think is legal, but I am open to all kinds of ideas. Frankfurt High is my alma mater. I love my alma mater, but I really do believe we need to do things correctly, and we don't need to find loopholes and excuses for doing things that, in my opinion, are illegal.
Buddy?
Well, this is something that's obviously, if you heard my opening statement, Frankfurt High is dear to my heart and my family's heart. You know, part of the reason that Frankfurt High is suffering is because our downtown area is dying. The single-family houses that I grew up around, growing up and down Capitol Avenue, even on the street I grew up on, Third Street, they're associations now. And, you know, there's nobody living there. So the way to fix that, as a city commissioner, my opinion would be to find a way to bring people living downtown, whether it's in some of the older areas, or in some of the new areas here in the P-3.
Scott?
Okay, I would just say to you that I have taken the lead in this issue, and I'm proudly a 1976 alumnus of Franklin High School. Folks probably get tired of hearing me spout this statistic. 53% of our housing stock is rental property. It's got to be 60 to 65 in South Frankfurt. So the city's got to do more energetic in promoting owner-occupied homes that'll raise property values, that'll give us more tax revenue. And I am proud to say that we give this Frankfurt Independent School District $200,000 to improve the lives of the people who live in our community.
Delvin, I believe it's your turn.
I used to work at Second Street School, and I understand the struggles that teachers down there, like Mrs. Van Ader and Mr. Thompson, have to deal with. And I believe that we definitely have to do something aggressive. And when I say aggressive, we have a lot of property owners who just let buildings deteriorate waiting on people to come in. Some of those buildings, people are never going to come in because they can't afford it due to triple-net leasing. What I propose is that we, as a commission, would enact eminent domain on some of these properties. So when these landowners and landlords aren't being responsible, then as a city, we need to take those properties and reassign those properties.
Brent?
The way you build a strong town is not simply through expanding and growing outwardly, but it's to use the resources that you already have more efficiently. By focusing our growth in infill areas, areas that can be redeveloped, like down in the Capitol Plaza area, and many other areas in the neighborhoods within the Independent School District, if we bring in more housing, more attractive housing types, and we'll bring more people in paying taxes, and we won't have to expand the services at increased costs.
Shannon, you started to raise your wild card. Do you want to do that now, or do you want to wait until after David?
I'll wait until David's done.
Okay, David, you finish, and then we'll go to Shannon.
All right, well, you know, I currently teach with Frankfurt Independent Schools, and I know firsthand the struggles that they face financially. I was a very well-liked and effective fifth-grade teacher at Second Street, and I was let go because of red tape and the lack of funds to keep me in a position. And getting more state property, you know, turned over to the city so that we can tax it would definitely help. But here's an idea. How about we not waste $30,000 on a pointless investigation and put that into the school system? Just an idea.
Shannon, you're recognized for 30 seconds.
Yes, and I wanted to go piggyback off of what Buddy said. You know, everybody is saying, let's bring people into downtown, but if you actually live downtown, you don't want to live there. I'm the only homeowner on the street, everybody else rents. Not only that, our homes are not insulated, they're not up to date. There's not much of an opportunity if you actually live downtown. Actually, if you even look to see if our children are safe, I think we're at one of the highest for the pedophiles that actually live downtown.
Thank you. Eric?
You know, this is really sort of my line of skill here. It all comes down to the properties that we have in the city. There are 12,140 households within the city limits. We have to invest in those, and consistently, I've come before the city commission for the last five years, asking for them to consider incentives and federal assistance that we could have to support renovation of properties, to get them into a livable condition that support newer, or increase taxes, and make a more accessible quality of life for living. And they've not done it. We've got to use those resources available to us to the best effort.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else want to weigh on this? No? We're back. Steve?
Let's move to...
Can you direct your next question to Ms. Waldrich up here on the second level?
Sure. Let's move to public safety. Is the Frankfurt Police Department adequately staffed and compensated, in your view? And if not, what specifically would you do to fix it?
I do believe, in speaking with the police chief, they are understaffed. However, budgeting keeps them from not being properly staffed, and he is doing the best that he can within the next couple of months in trying to bring other people on to get them in training. I think the longevity needs to be brought back for the quality of life for our public workers and our officers, law enforcement, firefighters, and things of that nature, so...
Ms. Griffith?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Is the Frankfurt Police Department adequately staffed and compensated? If not, what specifically would you do to fix it?
I don't know if it would ever be adequately staffed or compensated. For the line of what they do every single day to put their life on battle, I don't think there ever is enough compensation. But to know that our Frankfurt Police Department is lower-paid than our surrounding counties, and they're just receiving the academy training and then branching to another county, I do have a problem with that. Not only that, on Christmas morning, when downtown two years ago, we woke up to gunfire. So I'm thankful at that point in time that we had a very immediate response, police department.
Thank you. John?
I would have to examine those figures as far as police pay being equal or less than surrounding police departments. I have a son that is in training right now to be a deputy sheriff of the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department, so I care a lot about that. Yes, they're understaffed right now, and that's because we've had a swath of retirements up and down the ranks, mainly senior ranks. And so it takes over a year to get the recruit on patrol. So that's why we have a problem right now with lack of policemen.
Thank you. Lynn Bowers, Franklin Police Department?
I haven't heard any complaints about being underpaid, and I think I would if we were severely underpaid. I think we might be somewhat understaffed. I was never about cutting back on staffing in that department, or really in any department, because I believe that we are about public service, and public safety is the number-one priority for me, that city government should render, as well as infrastructure. So those two things are important, and I think that's where we need to put our monetary backing. So that's my priority, is public safety and infrastructure.
Buddy?
I believe that they are, I think, five or six officers short right now after what the retirements that have gone through. And Mayor Sauer is right, there was a slew of people, of officers, that did retire here within the last three or four years. But as a commissioner, I think one thing that we could do is try and better retain the officers through a, help with a clear-cut form of advancement, so they can go through the ranks and keep more officers instead of losing officers.
Okay, Scott, you're up.
I'm pretty sure that we're at 60 now. We were as low as 52 just recently. So at least on paper, we have 60 officers. The real problem with our compensation package is, we don't do enough to retain our fine officers. Our entry-level compensation is adequate, okay? It may be even some incentive. But we've got to do a better job of getting that pay on the back end to keep our folks with us.
Mr. Hasafey?
Chief Ellis told me personally that they are understaffed. Chief Ellis told me personally that, over time, officers have to leave to surrounding counties because their families are expanding, and they're not able to afford those upgrades to those families. The other thing that I understand is that the formula to staff our first responders is based on the city population only. And if this is true, then it's a disservice, because those same people have to service the county as well. So if we think about it, we really need to change the formula so it'll be more equitable.
Mr. Swager?
I've been impressed with our current chief on how he's implemented some creative programs to try to stretch the dollars even farther, the limited amount of money that he has. But given that, the core of a solid police program are the officers and having quality of people in there. My work in transportation and at the state, I've seen what the effect is when you don't have the amount of money to pay people, and you can't attract people, and you can't retain people. And the same lesson applies to our police, the officers there. We need to have pay that is comparable or better, and we need to make sure the working conditions are adequate for those officers.
Thank you. Mr. Fields?
Well, public safety includes more than just our police department. Frankfurt PD is understaffed, and they are underpaid, but so is our Frankfurt Fire Department. And they've got buildings that are falling apart, they don't have the equipment that they need. And, you know, our first responders are the lifelines of our city. Should, you know, we knew about the retirements, we should have been more proactive with that instead of reactive. We've known about them for a while, we should have already had people in place to replace those. And for Ms. Bowers to say that she hasn't heard anything about being underfunded or undercompensated is absolutely ridiculous. That means she hasn't been in talking to our fire departments, or our police officers in finding out what, you know, they actually need. It just proves, you know, the disconnect between city government and...
Thank you. Mr. Wissman?
You know, government is here for one reason, really, is to do what we can't do individually by ourselves, and the main thing is to keep us safe, right? You know, we need to think about our future. We are a capital city, and as we see all around the country, that puts us at a further risk than we would be as some other communities. You know, currently, we have six patrolmen on the roads. If one of them gets sick at any given time for a couple of days, or catches the flu, we're not serving the community at the need that we have. You know, the other day, we had the teachers' rally, we had all of them on Capitol Avenue, and the city was not being staffed. And we have 28,000 residents, but we have 50,000 people plus in this county, or the city, every single day that require our fire, our EMS, and our police patrolling. And we're not serving those like we need to. Our fire EMS and our police are all understaffed, underpaid, and we need to do better.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate your answer. Okay. Sorry to cut you off, but if I let you go long, then I've got to let everybody go long, and then we, you know, most of us want to be able to go to sleep early enough to wake up in the morning. I'm just having fun with you, Eric, don't beat me up. I think it's time to come back to Kathy. Kathy?
Yep.
Do you have a question for Ms. Griffith up there on the second level?
Sure. And this might be considered a lightning round question, you don't have to go in depth. As a city commissioner, you would be a decision-maker, and a lot of big decisions. Just in your personal life, when it comes to making big decisions, a lot of times, we like to throw ideas off somebody else. So when needing advice and having to make a big decision, who's your go-to? Who do you listen to? And why?
Well, that's easy, is 10 years ago, I gave my Lord, or my life, to the Christ, and He's the one that guides my steps. So if I was to do any consulting, He would be the best one to tell me how I can reach the heart of the community.
John Sauer?
Good answer. I guess I would also do a cost-benefit analysis. I would go to people that were expert in the field and ask their opinion, and then take that, put that together, and come up with the solution, or whatever it is.
Lynn, I think we're back up front. To you?
Yeah, I was going to ask if you would repeat that question.
Sure.
Who is your go-to? When?
When you're making a decision and you need advice about something, is there someone in your life that you go to for advice? Who's your go-to?
Lots of people in my life. There's all of Frankfurt. If anybody, if you know me, you know I'm always asking what your opinion is on whatever the issues are. I usually have an opinion, and then I want other people's opinions and perspectives. And by the time I vote, I have probably taken hundreds of opinions from people with input. So my go-to people are the citizens of Frankfurt, and many, many of them, because I might ask in Kroger's, or I might make a telephone call. And I also utilize staff more now than in the beginning. I utilize citizens... I utilize citizens and experts in the community. When I was new, it was mainly staff.
Mr. Bannan?
This one's easy for me. You know, it has to be my wife. We've been able to go through a marriage for 24 years. And just like anybody else in here, if you're in a marriage, you have your ups and your downs. But she has been my rock, been the one that's always been there for me. And for me, if I ever have anything that I have on my chest, I rely on her heavily.
Scott, you're up.
Yeah, my lovely bride, Becky, been married forty years. She's just solid as a rock. I have taken her advice 99% of the time. The one thing she calls to me against that I didn't listen to was running for the City And she looks at me and says, "I told you so." But anyway, she is my rock, she's lovely, and thank the Lord I have her.
That's great. Delvin, you're up.
My inspiration for even being here today is John W. Mason II, my grandmaster who taught me martial arts. And he was the best Christian that I ever knew, and through him, I got to know Jesus a lot better. And even though he passed away in 2012, and he's no longer here, my wife trained along with me, and when I stray away from his teachings, she's quick to remind me. And so even though he's passed away in 2012, his teachings still live on, and I'm still able to rely on him. And I can still hear his voice when I'm making decisions and say, "Delvin, what would Jesus do?"
Brent Schwager, you're up.
Well, similar to a number of the panelists here, there's a lot of people in my life that I talk to about different decisions. There are people that are in my, at work, people in my different organizations I belong to. And part of it just depends on what particular issue, or, you know, what expert I need to turn to. But I'm going to embarrass her right now. The person that I talk to the most consistently is my girlfriend. She is able to keep me level-headed, she is able to ask critical questions, and really focuses me to help me find the direction I need to make that decision.
Thank you. David?
There are so many people that I would talk to if elected as city commissioner. Obviously, one of those would be, or many of those, would be the citizens of Frankfurt, the ones that elected me. But obviously, my husband Nikolai, I speak with him about everything. As a matter of fact, before I post anything on social media or come out and, you know, and say something, I say, you know, "Would you mind looking over this, you know, make sure I don't stick my foot in my mouth," or, you know, write it in a way that it can be interpreted other than the way I meant it. But there are just, there are so many.
Eric?
You know, the go-to answer should be, obviously, our constituents. I have a wealth of information and an expert on some topics, but not on everything. And I think as an elected official, we really have the duty to find the authority on every subject, to get the best information, to make the most educated vote or decision as we possibly can. I consistently say that Frankfurt is blessed. We have a population that has 30% with a bachelor's degree or higher. We have state government here, that we have most of the experts in the field within the state. We should never have a problem relying on those resources to help us make educated decisions and to be able to do better for our community. Many times, those people, I feel, are excluded from the conversation because of their expertise, and it's not wanted to be heard by whoever's making a decision. But we have to rely on those brains much more often. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia?
First and foremost, I like to evaluate and research what I'm needing. I also reach out to professionals that are in their area that I may need that information for me. I'm not too ashamed to ask for help, I'm not too ashamed to say, "Hey, I need some more information from someone that has that knowledge." I always say, on the table was very strong in Frankfurt. I think diversity is great, but inclusion is power. And I think including our community on decisions and allowing them. We have a lot of intelligent community members and great ideas out there, and I think we need to rely on them a lot for that as well, so.
Thank you. Okay, we have time for one more question before we go to closing statements. Steve, do you have a question that you think is the one you've been waiting all night to ask?
I saved my best for last.
Okay, John Sauer is the person you're going to address that question to.
Seems to be a consensus that Frankfurt needs to attract more young people. If you were under age thirty, starting a family, and looking for a place to live, would you choose Frankfurt as it exists today? If yes, why? If not, what would you do to make Frankfurt more appealing to young people?
Well, first off, would be high-speed internet service and fiber optic. We've got to do that. That's going to appeal to the younger set. Another thing that I have in my plan, and what I want to do, is to have mixed housing in the Plaza area. And you're going to have both apartments, and you're going to have single-family units there as well. And those ought to be designed for, the apartments probably are going to be filled by recent graduates of universities across the United States, and obviously Kentucky. So those are some of the things. I would also do a lot to work on riverfront development and a new marina, and a place down there in Riverview Park would be one of my priorities.
John, if I can press you with a quick follow-up.
Sure.
Again, if you were under thirty, looking to start a family and looking for a place to live, would you choose current Frankfurt as it exists today?
No.
Thanks.
Okay. Lynn, would you like a shot at this?
I was just reading some literature about people in that age, the millennials are, they're less likely to buy homes than my generation was, or Buddy's generation. You're a Gen Xer, right? Anyway, they're less likely to do those things, so they're more likely to be renters. And I've heard Commissioner Tippett talk about wanting more homeowners, but I might do more with really upscale rental property. I would talk to some people in that age group to see what they think Frankfurt needs to do. I've met lots of people from many areas of the country during my walk on this campaign, and I've heard really no negatives, even from the younger folks. Well, can I say one more thing? One statement was, "We need to change," but not specifically was I told how from a younger person. So I would do more asking.
Okay, thanks, Lynn.
Dave? I'm sorry, but in fairness, since I pressed John, I need to press Lynn, too. Yes or no, if you were young and starting a family, would you choose Frankfurt as it exists today?
I absolutely think that I might. I've lived here basically my whole life. I lived in Atlanta, and Birmingham, and Lexington. And if I were going to start a family, of all the places in which I've lived, this would be the place that I would start my family. And there's literature out there that tells us that people perceive of Frankfurt as a good place to start a family. So yes, I would.
Yes, okay, thank you. Buddy?
Absolutely not. Frankfurt's dying. We've had zero population growth in 30 years. Think about that for a minute. I remember a time, as a kid, I came down here on St. Clair Mall, and there was a Woolworth store or a dime store. It burned to the ground. And now, we, our city leaders thought that we could put up a parking structure, because we needed parking downtown, and that would solve it. And then we decide, then they decided, "Oh, we don't need a parking structure, we need a mall, a pedestrian mall, that'll solve it." And that didn't solve it either. The thing that's going to solve Frankfurt right now at this critical juncture...
Thirty seconds?
The thing that's going to solve Frankfurt right now at this critical juncture is warmbodies of people living in downtown Frankfurt. And we've got to figure out a way to do it right here. We've got to have mixed-use commercial and residential space right here that will increase our tax base, that will increase the money going to the schools, that will increase people downtown and help business flow.
Thank you. Scott?
The answer to that question would be very difficult to say yes, Steve. In my heart, I'd want to say yes, but empirically, no. And the reason is, the demographics are skewed. Thirty-eight percent of our population is 50 years of age and older. Twenty-three percent of our population is 60 years of age and older. And the reason for that is, folks in my demographic were living here when Frankfurt and state government economic driver was added to Zenith. It is no longer the Zenith. We need to find another economic driver. And what I would say is, we need to turn Houston Barber, Dr. Houston Barber, and Mr. Cobb, our two school superintendents, public school superintendents loose, and let them create a dynamic curriculum for a young 25-year-old parent. We want to put their children in our school districts. That is imperative for growth.
Thank you, Scott. Delvin?
I would, I'll say yes. I was about 30 when I moved here to Frankfurt, and brought my beautiful wife along, my son is here. However, Frankfurt has declined since the time I've been here. Now, why would I want people to move here? I'll tell you why. On the campaign trail, I've spoken to people, and my campaign slogan is, "The future starts today." These people that I speak to in this community believe that there is a future. The people that I speak to in Frankfurt know that Frankfurt is a place that people will want to come to in the future, as long as we have the right leadership to guide those changes.
Thank you. Brent?
I chose to move to Frankfurt when I was in my twenties. It's been a long time now. But I also chose to stay here, and I chose to raise my family. And so I believe it's actually better than it was over 20 years ago, when I first moved here. Now, there's still a lot of things that need to be improved to attract young families and young, single people here. I will say, I think our schools are good, I think Frankfurt offers a very safe community. But we need, we need more recreational activities for young people. People have talked about the desire to have indoor recreational facilities, recreation, rec centers. We need to build on our riverfront.
Brent, you're up, you're out of time. Do you want to use your wild card? Thirty more seconds, please.
More, we need more trails, to build up our trails and our parks and improve on them. And then one of the things that's kind of interesting that's been brought up several times to me, is that it may seem minor, but there's, for young families, or people with young kids, they go to birthday parties to Lexington and Louisville every weekend. And there's a real business opportunity for people to do something like a Monkey Joe's or a Sky Zone or Urban Ninja Project, so that we keep the money here and have something for the young kids to do.
Thank you. David, you're up.
Oh, I would say without a doubt, 1 million percent yes. Because I know the potential of Frankfurt. And convincing people to move here is kind of the reason that we're running for a city commission. That's how we're going to improve Frankfurt. So if I was to tell someone no, I'm kind of shooting myself in the foot. But there is absolutely nothing for our kids to do here. I think one of our biggest disgraces, our biggest losses, was the fact that we shut down Swim Play Frankfurt so quickly, and didn't really look for sponsorships or other type of funding to get that moving forward. Yeah, and we have to utilize our river more. I think the marina is a fantastic idea, but yeah, that's a way to...
Eric, you're up.
Yes, I did. You know, I know a lot of my colleagues or classmates would say no, that they would not. But that's one of the main reasons I'm running. And I have to correct Buddy, you know, 1980s population of Frankfurt was 25,000. We have grown over 2,000 people without almost a single house being built within the city boundaries in the last 30 years. One of the major complaints I hear from young people that are moving here and kind of testing the waters and renting, as Lynn says, is that we don't have great apartment housing. We don't have great outfitted apartments for people, but we have tons of potential. I jokingly call us hipster Mecca a lot, that we have everything you want to be a young person, from rivers to hiking trails to kayaking, to a great, affordable housing. We have it all here, we just need to sell it a little better, I believe.
Thank you. Ms. Walderch?
I would say no if we continue down the street of being complacent and stagnant. But I also say yes, and that's one of the reasons of why I'm running for city commission. I think it's time, and I really am impressed with the young leadership that is running for city commission, and I think it's time to get some of the new, younger people in with new ideas that are creative and that can welcome the innovative ideas and use all of what Frankfurt has, what it holds. And I feel with that, it would be successful, and we would want to move here.
Okay. Ms. Griffith?
I say yes, even though I was born and raised here, and I didn't really get the opportunity or the choice, but I do get to continue to keep living in Frankfurt. And whether Frankfurt's good or bad, it can only take one person to change the community. It takes one heart, one voice, and it also takes one vote. But I do ask the people that, if you are going to ask a question like that, to project it into the future of having kids, make sure you put a candidate on the commissioner board that actually has a family, that is raising a family in today's times.
Thank you. There are two wild cards left. Does anybody need to use them now, or you want to wait? You okay? You can only use it once, Lynn, I'm sorry. I actually keep track. You should know me by now. Okay. We're going to move to closing statements, then. I think it's about that time. I appreciate all of your answers, and you're sticking with it, particularly as late as this night. You know, if it was a full moon, we'd be worried about some of us turning perhaps. But nonetheless, I appreciate you all being here, and we're going to go to closing statements. What we're going to do is do that in reverse order, in which we did the opening statements, which means we're going to start with John Sauer. John, you did not use your wild card, so you can take up to 1 minute and 30 seconds.
I would like to work hard for you again. The previous city manager told me that at the end of my two-year term, I had more constituent work orders than any other member of the commission. That was a real compliment to me, and I can do the same for you in this next term. One of the reasons is because I do have the experience. I do know the people over at City Hall, and that's an asset. I know where the light switches are, and I know how to turn them on. I would appreciate your vote, May 22nd. I'm number seven on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shannon Griffith, you have 1 minute, please, your closing statement.
Frankfurt, I'm the one candidate that will carry your voice from the kitchen table to City Hall. I've already demonstrated before the election even came up that I'm willing to do that for the right reason, and that's for the safety and for our future generation. So if you ask me, I say, "Vote for the person that's willing to stand on the street and demonstrate the action." And I'm not a politician, I am a mother, but my mothering does not stop at my home, it actually stops at everyone else's home. And I say that, you know, it takes a village to raise a child, and we need everyone to be able to step up and do their parts. And I'm willing to do that before and after this election.
Patricia Walderch, 1 minute?
Yes. So I say, daily, I stay steadfast in an idea. If I have a problem, I bring a solution. While Frankfurt change is inevitable, and I'm offering myself as a solution. I bring cohesive leadership that will deliver transparent communication and non-swaying integrity. I will be intentional in my decision-making and effective and efficient in my implementation. It's time for Frankfurt to thrive. Vote nine on May 22nd. Frankfurt needs change. Frankfurt needs you and I. Let's grow together.
Thank you. Eric Wispin, you have 1 minute.
You know, it's an absolute critical time for Frankfurt right now. The next city commission and the next county fiscal court will make some decisions that will be, that will shape the future of this town for the next 50 years to come, unlike anything that's happened in the last 50 years. I want to be here to help build the foundations of the future, the theoretical and the quite literal foundations of the future of our city, that I've already began in many ways, whether it's a small way in developing the market series downtown, or helping some developers come in to renovate Bridgeport School and some of the nine, 10 housing units downtown. We've got to have new vision and new leadership to be able to find our way into the future. And I'm afraid if we don't do it now, if we don't elect new leadership and install some new ideas, we're going to very short find our way short of the future. We're going to lose the next generation, we're going to find ourselves lacking in so many ways. I ask the community to give me an opportunity, and please vote number eight on May 22nd, and again, in the general election on November 6th.
Thank you. David Fields, you have 1 minute.
You know, we've all said so much already, so I'll try to keep it short. But, you know, I could selfishly ask you to vote for just me, but we've got such a great crop of new and talented and creative and forward-thinking candidates that I would really love to work with. And we have an amazing opportunity to really make a huge change in Frankfurt. really make a huge change in Frankfurt, and a change that will put Frankfurt on the right path to succeed, and a great chance to get out of this stagnant pattern that we've been in. You know, my definition for insanity is doing the exact same thing over and over and expecting a different result. So do me a favor. My birthday is May 21st, and primary just happens to be on the 22nd, so vote for me and give me an awesome birthday present.
Brent Sweger, you have 1 minute.
I have a strong vision for what Frankfurt can be in the future. I have five overarching goals that I want to work towards to help achieve that vision. Number one is to improve our local development. Two is invest in our neighborhoods. Three is to listen and improve our communications with our citizens, making the Capital Plaza area redevelopment a great place. And number five is create more recreational opportunities for people of all ages. So I think with my skills as a problem solver, as an engineer, as a planner, with my persistence and ability to work together, and my desire to make this town a better place for my two sons, Chase and Brooks, I'll ask you for your vote on May 22nd, and you can read more about me or contact me on my website, brentsweger.com.
Thank you. Delvin Azofeifa, you have 1 minute and 30 seconds, if you choose to use it all.
Thank you. The South Frankfurt Neighborhood Association had given all of us questions, and to me, it was very telling, because when we were offered those questions, we actually had time to reflect on those questions and to think about those questions. One of those questions asked about transportation options, and some folks said that our transportation system is fine. And I can tell you personally, I can guarantee that anybody who has said that has never ridden a bus here, I have ridden the bus here. People who said that have never ridden the taxi here, I have ridden the taxis here. I was the only candidate to mention riverboat transportation as an option. From day one, I've supported first responders, and according to the South Frankfurt Neighborhood Association questions, I'm only one of two candidates who continue to support the first responders. Another question asked if we needed a new conference center. Another one asked if we needed a new city hall, and I responded, "No." Good parents will go to the store with the intention of buying something for themselves, but wind up buying something for their children. What I will tell you is that good parents know that they need to sacrifice so the next generation can be on better ground than the one previously. Conversely, bad parents only take care of their needs. We need to make sure to vote for the future. We need to take care of Frankfurt.
Thank you, Delvin. Scott Tippett, you have 1 minute, sir.
In closing, I would like to say that every decision that I have made, I have come to through the belief that what I was doing was in the best interest for the entire community. We have many accomplishments in my term. We've hired an excellent city manager. We've hired an outstanding city solicitor. We've attained a Tiger grant. The proactive code enforcement program that I wanted is working very well in my first campaign. So I would ask you, let's keep the momentum going. Let's keep me in office. Vote for me, Scott Tippett, please, number 10, on May 22nd.
Buddy Bet, you have 1 minute, sir.
I scrapped my prepared statement because I feel so passionately about the direction of our city right now. For the last 24 years, I've been around 17 counties in central Kentucky, and I've seen them grow, and I've seen them thrive, and I've seen them do it responsibly. There's no urban sprawl in Versailles. There's no urban sprawl in Mercer County. There's no urban sprawl in Carrollton. But I can tell you, I go to these counties, and I've seen turf fields for sports. I've seen athletic fields that are bringing in untold thousands of dollars. I've seen, I've seen nodatoriums. I've seen really, really nice parks. And that being said, if you're wanting Frankfurt to remain the same, then don't vote for me. If you're ready for Frankfurt to move into the new millennium, and for there to be change and growth, and responsible growth, it's time for a change, and ask for your vote on May 22nd.
Thanks, Buddy. Lynn Bowers, you have 1 minute, the final word from the candidates. Go.
I'm Lynn Bowers, a native of Frankfurt, who has lived in many other places, large places, smaller places, not many, but several. So I appreciate what Frankfurt is, and I have chosen to come back to Frankfurt and build a career here, and have been successful here. And I know you, and I know your issues, and I have walked the walk eight times. This time, I've met people who have voluntarily, by choice, relocated here from Brazil, from West Africa, from South Africa, from Germany, from Louisville, from Georgetown, two from Louisville, one from Oldham County, one from Richmond. And I have heard nothing but, "This is a great place." And I say, "People don't appreciate it. Perhaps people need to change an attitude. Perhaps people need to go where they feel comfortable with themselves." I love Frankfurt. We have, let me just say this, we have the number-one facility in this country, and I believe in the globe, on the globe, for individuals with cognitive impairment. We've got one of the best park systems in the state. We have, we have everything here. We love Frankfurt. Let's change our attitudes. Vote for Lynn Bowers and win with Lynn.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thanks for...
Thank you to all of you. I want to thank our sponsors, the people who worked so hard to put this on tonight, the Frankfurt Area Chamber of Commerce, their staff have worked tirelessly all afternoon and evening. The Frankfurt Plant Board, they came in here, what, about lunchtime, and started setting up. So they've been here for 12 hours, guys. They've put in yeoman's efforts to make sure that your remarks can be carried by the community and be viewed. Kathy Lindsey and Steve Stewart, our two panelists, Frankfurt Plant Board, Frankfurt State Journal, fantastic job, guys. I always appreciate everything that you contribute. And I especially want to thank our candidates. I challenged you to provide straightforward answers, but also answers that would be memorable. I think you did that. I learned a lot tonight, and I appreciate your forthright point of view in terms of what your thoughts are and where we're going and where we need to go. There's no question, this is an extremely important juncture for this community. And when I look at the past quarter century, there are some things going in different areas right now that I'm really excited and enthusiastic about. Needs to be kind of brought together and focused and pushed over the hill. I know how hard that is. Those of you who know me know I'm somewhat of a change agent. I've pushed hard for a lot of years. So I just encourage you to keep doing that, keep moving us forward. Again, I want to thank everybody for being here, being a part of this tonight. And I want to remind you that you can turn on Cable 10 on May 22nd to see the live returns. Please do so. And my thanks again to everyone. Thank you. Good evening and good night.